I'm going to go ahead and call us to order and declare that we have a quorum of seven members present. We'll move to item C, recognitions. Dr. Ely. Oh, no, I need to read my welcome.
Yes, sir.
Sorry. It's our third meeting. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have all come to this meeting informed and prepared. We have just completed a workshop meeting where we heard reports and discussed much of the information needed to make decisions in either this meeting or in upcoming meetings. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board, and members of the community. We'll begin this meeting, as we do all of our meetings, with pledges of allegiance to the American flag, the Texas flag, and a moment of silence. We have six great representatives from our three high schools, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, College View, and College Station High School. Invite them to come forward, introduce themselves, give us a fun fact about yourself, and then lead us in our pledges.
Go ahead, Al. What?
Yes, you can move it down.
Good evening. My name's Ellie Garrett. I'm a senior at A&amp;M Consolidated, and I'm student body president.
My name is Coleman Maxwell, and I am student body vice president, and I am in the 10th grade.
I'm Jinson McMurray. I'm a junior at College Station High School, and I am student body vice president.
11th grade.
My name's Hallie Fauch, and I'm student body president at College Station High School, and I am a senior.
My name is Oshini Batagahake. I'm a senior at College View High School, and I'm the president.
My name is Elias Gomez. I am a senior at College View High School, and I'm a member of the TEACs program for fire training. So, that's pretty cool.
And now for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now for the Texas pledge.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And now let's observe a moment of silence.
You all may be seated.
Okay, guys. Take a picture with the board.
No, they're going to want you up front. So, they really want a picture of you. They don't really care about us. But we're going to stay in here like we know.
And now I'm on to student recognitions, and we have quite a few recognitions tonight.
It's one of the great evenings of the year. Forty College Station ISD students were recently recognized by the National Merit Scholarship Program and the College Board. Of those 12 CSISD seniors were named semifinalists in the 64th Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. Since 2003, College Station ISD has averaged an astounding 12.6 national merit semifinalist per year. The 12 CSISD students are now in a pool of approximately 16,000 semifinalists nationwide and are competing for 7,500 national merit scholarships worth a total of approximately $31 million. About 90% of the semifinalists are expected to be named finalists, and of those, around half will win a national merit scholarship and earn the prestigious national merit scholar title. The nationwide pool of semifinalists, which represents less than 1% of the U.S. high school seniors, includes the highest-scoring entrants in each state. In addition to the 12 national merit semifinalists named earlier this year, 28 other CSISD students received either a letter of commendation from the National Merit Scholarship Program or earned national Hispanic scholar designation. Approximately 34,000 committed students throughout the nation are being recognized for their exceptional academic promise. Although they will not continue in the 2019 competition for national merit scholarship awards, committed students placed among the top 5% of the 1.6 million students who entered the competition by taking the preliminary SAT national merit scholarship qualifying test. The College Board's National Hispanic Recognition Program identifies academically outstanding Hispanic and Latino high school students. Each school year, the NHRP honors about 5,000 of the highest-scoring students from over 250,000 Hispanic and Latino juniors who take the PSAT. Two of the following students qualified in two categories and will be mentioned when they are called forward. When Mr. Glenn Winkle, that's him, calls your name, please come forward to be recognized. And you'll go to Mr. Harris right there.
So, my intention is not to mispronounce your name, but so please bear with me. We're going to start with the national merit semifinalist. If you're here, again, please come forward as I call your name. McKenna Allen. Robert Doorman. All right, Robert. I'd like to mention that a lot of these folks also are involved in extracurricular activities, and so they have other things going on as well, so. Yaxin Duan. Isabella Garza. And Isabella was also recognized in the National Hispanic Recognition Program. Somi Kim. Selena Lee. Abed Razvi. I saw Abed Razvi. Roger got a lap in. Xiao Zhou. Now we will move to those who received a letter from the national merit commended letter. Hannah Alvard. Abirath Bhuvanish. Maria Samantha De Figueroa. Amy Deng. Julian Huang. Sarah Kassam.
Meredith Poling. Noah Smith. Noah was also a National Hispanic Recognition Program recipient. Matthew Van Zant. Eric Zhang. Come on up. He couldn't have done it without you.
Jennifer Zhao. The remaining National Hispanic Recognition Program recipients, Nicholas Aparicio. Ethan Avala. And finally, Emmanuel Preciado.
That's it. Dr. Ely?
Let's give one more round of applause for all these tremendous students.
Double-checking Mr. Harris, and that ends our recognitions for this evening.
Looks like they don't need to be reminded that this is a good time to leave if you're going to leave. While you're doing that, I would like to point out and recognize the artwork that's been provided on the back wall there by Head Start, A&amp;M Consolidated High School, College Station High School, and College View High School students. It really is some amazing work, so if you get a chance, have a look at it. Okay, they're almost filed out, so I'm going to go ahead and move on with the consent agenda, which will be items G. J2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10. Does anyone wish to remove any consent agenda items?
I would move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All oppose? Motion carries 7-0. Board directions and reports. Does anyone have any reports since our last meeting that they would like to share with the group?
DEIC met this last week. It was a productive meeting as usual. They went through kind of the status of where that plan was and has gone since it was implemented and approved by the board last year. So, we got a good sense of kind of where we are, where we're going, and then starting the discussion about school calendars for next year. So, as usual, a busy committee.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, superintendent report. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. Just want to talk about some of the things that are upcoming, and I guess one of the things that just happened at our workshop session that we had at 5:30 this afternoon. We were able to hear from John Hall, Executive Director of Facilities, and talk about where we are on our 2015 bond projects. A number of big projects have already finished, thinking about Pecan Trail Intermediate School opening in August of 2017, and then Welver Mill School opening in August of 2018. We are busily finishing the River Bend Elementary School, the last big project from that 2015 bond, and it is scheduled to be complete in February of this year for opening of August of 2019. So, we're excited about the progress we're making on those bonds. It was good to stop and reflect and really to thank our community for being so supportive of College Station ISD and our school system, being in a rapidly growing school district that's bringing numbers of kids to the community and building and opening five schools in five years. We know it would not be possible without the unwavering support of our community, so we do appreciate all that you provide for us and the ability to build these facilities for these kids that are coming to College Station and joining us here in our community. Do want to talk a little bit about our community-based accountability system. We're continuing the redevelopment of that system. In fact, we'll have our first meeting with our committee that will start and will take place on Thursday of this week, and under the leadership of Chief Administrative Officer Molly Perry, we'll be looking at the seven pillars and student performance and teacher quality and performance and all those areas that we want to make sure that we are doing a great job here in College Station ISD in meeting the needs and expectations and indeed the hopes and dreams of our constituents here, our parents and our students and our community. So, we're excited about the work in community-based accountability that will be upcoming, and you'll see some more information about that as we move throughout this fall and spring. And with that, Mr. Harris, that's my report.
Great, thank you. That takes us to the hearing of citizens, item F. I'm going to read our public statement, and then I will address the cards. And if anyone has any cards that they would like to address the board, there are green cards for non-agenda items and white cards for agenda items, so please grab one. They're out on the table outside. Fill them out and return them over there to the board assistant, and she will bring them to us. Okay, during this time, public comments are welcome on non-agenda items. The board will listen, but the Open Meetings Act prevents us from responding to speakers. Please complete the note card and give it to the executive assistant. Public comments are limited to three minutes per person. Each person has one opportunity at the microphone regardless of minutes used. Unused minutes may not be accrued by another speaker. The executive assistant will time the comments and alert the president when time has expired. The board will not allow derogatory comments. Okay, so the first non-agenda item speaker is William Allen. So, if you'll come up to the microphone and please state your name and address at the start of your remarks, right there, that way everyone will know who you are.
Hi, I'm William Allen, 320 Jennifer Drive. And let me get my timer started so I can time myself. I'm good to go. So, I'd like to say thank you to the board for listening to us and hearing what we have to say, and I know that me speaking on this policy won't change anything this year, that the money is already spent, but I'm here to fight for the people that come after us, for them to not have their privacy invaded. So, my parents are hard workers. Sometimes I don't see them for days at a time because they're at work, and I know for a fact that they don't appreciate their tax money, their hard-earned money, being spent on things like drug testing students when they could be spent... I can only speak for what's wrong at Kinsol. There are sinks that haven't worked for the four years that I've been there. There are stall doors in the bathrooms that don't close. There are ceiling tiles with incredibly visual water damage. This policy has created a distrust between the students and administrators. A kid who's never been in trouble, the entire 12 years they've been in school, never had a referral, never been ISS, never been suspended, they're all of a sudden under scrutiny and being suspected of being a drug user without any basis whatsoever. Another problem with this is that the teachers, the people that are paid to be here, aren't submitted to the same thing as us. This policy is ineffective. There's research from the American Academy of Pediatrics. Say that one more time. The American Academy of Pediatrics has stated that randomly drug testing students is ineffective. Lastly, this is an invasion of privacy. I have a direct quote from Mr. Harris. "I don't know if they particularly perceive that there was drug use on school grounds. I don't know of any particular allegations or situations related to that. The proposal was more or less, from an overall health and safety standpoint, for the students. The administrators and personnel were concerned that drugs were an issue that was affecting the students and their pursuits in the schools." Now, to me at least, that sounds like the board trying to push their morals onto the students, a job that should be reserved for the parents. That quote, to me, says that we're not looking at what's happening in the schools. We're looking at what's happening outside of schools and the students' private lives. And I believe that the school has no right to have their hands in the private lives of the students and what the students do while they're not under the school roof or on school grounds. And if nothing is changed, in the future, we at least want an explanation as to why we're being tested with all of the things that I've stated here considered. Thank you.
Any other cards? Okay, so we have one more speaker, but it's on an agenda item, so I will hold that until we reach that agenda item, and then we will get to you. So, that takes us to H1. Receive report on CSISD Education Foundation. Dr. Ely.
Mr. President, members of the board, as you know, six times a year we come and present to you about a particular program that's going on in College Station ISD and what are some of our goals and what our aspirations are and how well we're doing, and it's my pleasure this evening to introduce Teresa Bennett, Director of the Education Foundation, to talk about our education foundation and the great work that's going on there. It's a big year for the CSISD Education Foundation. We're turning 20, and so our 20th birthday, we'll celebrate that in May of 2019. I know Ms. Bennett will talk a little bit more about that, but looking forward to hearing all the great things that are going on with our foundation and how they're supporting students and how they're supporting teachers in College Station ISD. With that, Ms. Bennett, Director of Education Foundation. Ms. Bennett.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, Mr. Harris, members of the board, and members of the audience. Thank you for giving me the opportunity tonight to visit with you about the Education Foundation. As Dr. Ely already told you, we are celebrating our 20th birthday this year, and so I want you to sit back and I want you to enjoy the amazing successes that we've seen from the Education Foundation, and I certainly do not take credit for all of this. It is a team effort. It is truly a community. I have a board of directors that supports this, as we'll talk about here shortly. Of course, several members of the audience here are supporters, as many of you are. So, it is just exciting and a passion of mine to be in charge of this wonderful program, and I'm just delighted to be here tonight and glad to share all the wonderful things that we're doing. So, with that, what I'm going to do tonight is really give you guys a great comparison of where we've come from and where we are today. So, our mission, first off, is to provide resources that inspire learning, motivate, actually enrich teaching, and recognize our successes of our teachers and students. And how do we do that? We do that through six of our programs that I'm going to talk to you about tonight. So, I love going back and seeing where we came from. This was our original logo at the top there, 1999, when we were established, and in 2012, we did a rebranding, and we did some research on this, and we came up with the tagline, linking community, educators, and students, because that's what we do. We link our community with our school district. So, this is a picture of our first board of directors. I just thought it'd be great to give them a little shout-out because they are the ones that came together to form the Education Foundation, and Aunt Ganter was my predecessor. She was our first Education Foundation Director, and she left me in great hands when I took over nine years ago. And as you can see, many of these community members are still in our community today, very active people, and we do owe a great deal of gratitude to them for having foresight and having the wisdom to set up an education foundation for College Station schools. So, this is our current board of directors. We have 29 board of directors currently on our board, and we meet monthly. I do want to introduce a couple of my board members that are here tonight with me, our president this year, Robert Orzabal, and Paula Lancaster, who serves as our secretary. And of course, Dr. Ely also serves on our board as well as an ex-officio member, and Quinn Williams is also our board of representative on our board this year and has been for the last couple of years. So, as you can see, it's a very well-represented group of people throughout our community, and we really do depend on them to help us implement all the great things that we're doing each year. And of course, as you know, nothing gets done without support staff, and so I do want to give a little shout-out to my support staff, two of which are here tonight, Amy Hi and Ashley Harkins. Y'all can wave. Erica could not be here tonight. It's her anniversary. You know, I said, hey, you need to go celebrate your anniversary. So, I want to just tell them thank you publicly for all their help. They are amazing, amazing people, and we could not do what we're doing today, especially the last few years, without their amazing support and the work that they do behind the scenes. So, let's talk about our programs. One of our longest-standing programs that we've been supporting is our innovative teaching grants. Our first year that we were created in 1999, we actually gave away 15 innovative teaching grants totaling $32,000. And this year, coming up actually next month on November 7th, we will be having our 20th Grant Patrol, and we will be awarding over 50 grants totaling over $150,000. So, you can see what a difference it has made over the last 20 years. And if you take a 20-year snapshot of all the grants that we've given out to the district, we have given out more than 500 grants, and the total is $1.3 million in total funds. I love this picture on the right. That's actually the Google VR glasses that we funded last year, and he's looking at a cell in the background, and that's what he's really seeing in the VR glasses, so he's able to go inside a cell and see the cell. So, that's kind of a cool picture. How do we give out our grants? We give them out at Grant Patrol, and those of you, most everybody in the room knows about Grant Patrol. We get on the buses, we get our cheerleaders and our drum line and our mascots, and we take the big checks, and we get our donors that have supported these grants, and we go out and we surprise the teachers, and it is a fabulous day, especially a day of my job for sure. And this is a picture from last year's Grant Patrol. So, one of our second big programs that's been around for a while is our student scholarship program. As you can see, in 2002, we awarded 12 scholarships totaling $11,000, and we had one endowed scholarship established at that point. And this year, actually coming up, the 20th year, we will award 60 scholarships totaling $79,500, and we currently hold 13 endowed scholarships. And we've awarded 508 scholarships awarded totaling $551,000 the last 17 years. Our Senior Hall of Fame banquet is something else that we've also been supporting for a long time. This is one of the ways we get to recognize our graduating seniors. It started out, though, as an academic scholarship program where we honored our top 5% students graduating, and it started out with the first 25 initially, and they also got to select their most influential educator to be a part of that program. I love what we've done with it since then. This next year coming up, we will honor over 60. Um, this next year coming up, we will honor over 60 students, usually about 6% of the graduating class. And they also get to select their most honored educator. But these students are selected based on leadership, integrity, school spirit, and positive attitude. And so I love that. It's a very eclectic group of kids that get to, um, be honored for whatever they're, whatever they're involved with, whether it's, uh, athletics or drill team or band or, uh, robotics, whatever their strengths are, um, they have an opportunity to be awarded at the Senior Hall of Fame. And they write an essay about their teachers, uh, that they select and then they are all, we, it all culminates with the banquet at the end of the year and it's, and most of you have been, especially this group, um, and we know it's a really, really, it's a one, it's a night that you have to have Kleenex and, uh, it's very touching and very moving. And as, as Ms. Hester always says, it keeps our teachers going, uh, from year to year because that's all they need is just a little encouragement every year to continue to, to do what they do. So we're really, we're really thankful and honored to be able to host, um, this event. Our Star Educator Program, um, is kind of a, kind of a, one of those things that's kind of in the background, but it's a great way for our community to be able to honor our staff and our teachers. Funny enough, this was the only thing that I knew about the Education Foundation before I took my job. Didn't even know about 50 Men Who Can Cook, sadly. But, um, I knew about the Star Educator Program and it started in, in 2001 and we honored 159 teachers and we raised about $2,900. This year, this, just this past year, we honored 404 teachers and we raised $9,200 for this program. So as you can see, it's, it's definitely still very vital. Um, it's wonderful. We give the certificate out. We, we have a pen that they get to put and wear on their, on their, um, a lot of them wear it on their lapels or their, um, their lanyards. And so over the last 18 years, we have actually honored 3,372 educators and raised $65,000 just through this little program. Success 247, um, is a learning website that we actually got started as a grant for the Education Foundation, um, about, uh, six years ago. A, a couple of our teachers wrote a grant and this is an online support website for 7th through 12th graders, um, who are taking basically regular classes and they, we wanted to be, be able to provide them more help, um, outside of class as they got home. And so this was developed, um, this is what we came up with, was a website, um, hosting, um, different subjects, different core curriculum subjects that we could help have videos, support homework, vocabulary. And as you can see, it started out with a couple of courses and now we have seven subjects with hundreds of online videos that are all made by our teachers, um, and then the support materials along with it. And to date, we have over 2,000 annual users of this website and that means they're getting on more than once a week and using it actively. And interestingly enough, all on their mobile devices, mostly. The Amy Anderson Literacy Legacy, um, is one of our newer programs that we started in 2016. It was actually started by one of our, it came from an idea from one of our board members who realized that there were a lot of children at, that were at their book fairs that they could not purchase books. And so she called me up and said, "Hey, I wanna, I want these pre-K and Head Start kids to be able to purchase books. How much is this gonna cost?" So I figured out, we had about 350 students that are in those, um, groups and she pretty much wrote a check the first year to fund this project for us. And so the second year, we decided to go ahead and maybe, you know, take a look at it and continue it. And then finally, the second, third year, we finally accepted it and adopted it as a, an official program of the Education Foundation that we will do every year. And actually, we would love to expand it beyond pre-K and Head Start. We're looking, we've actually written some grants outside to outside, um, community, um, nonprofits that, um, we could expand it to maybe our bilingual or, or, or dual-language classes possibly, or even up kindergarten level, first grade level, something like that. So we're very excited, um, to, I mean, let's just, it's so important that these kids have books to read at their houses that they like and that they enjoy. And so we're just really thrilled to be able to be a part of this program. We hope to grow it as, as, as the years go. So to date, we have, um, we have given, um, $10 vouchers to over 1,000 students and we've basically spent $10,000 in books for them to have at their houses. So it's been really, really successful. Our First Year Teacher Gift Card Program, um, started a couple of years ago. We had an anonymous, um, retired teacher that wanted to help out these first-year teachers because we know they don't get a paycheck for about six weeks. And they have to get their rooms ready, they have to get their classrooms ready to go. And so she approached us and said, "What can I do to help?" And so we came up with this First Year Gift Card Program. And so this is our third year to do it. And so we've, we've given gift cards to over 130 teachers. Now, these are first-year teachers, never taught before. Uh, so you can't imagine what their excitement level is when they get a, a $50 or $100 gift card given to them and say, "Okay, you can, this'll help you with your classroom." Chrissy's Closet, of course, is one of our favorite programs that we have adopted. Um, we adopted this two years ago. Um, obviously it was named after Chrissy Hester, who everybody knows in the district, um, for her, just her, she embodies what Chrissy's Closet is, to help others, to be there no matter what. And so I love the, I love the namesake here and we love the person it's named after. Um, but Chrissy's Closet is a clothing, toiletry, um, sometime we do backpacks at the beginning of school. Um, and we have raised over $30,000 specifically for Chrissy's Closet and we've helped over 2,000, uh, CSISD students and teachers and staff. Anybody that's affiliated with the district can, can use it, whether you're a student or a staff member. And we've had over 800 volunteers. And I can tell y'all, if, if you haven't had a chance to visit Chrissy's Closet, you oughta go. It's, it's housed in College View High School. It's open every Monday that schools open from 4:00 to 6:00 PM and it's amazing. It's a great, it's a great experience. These people come and they feel like they're at a store and they are welcomed and they are, when they leave there, they are smiling and happy and glad to, um, to have been there. So it's, we make it a really great experience for them. We also do some, um, special programs through that as well. We do a Christmas, um, Saturday morning, you know, come see Santa, take pictures. Uh, Mr. Bassett's our Santa Claus and, uh, we, it's just, it's just a great opportunity to serve our community. So how do we showcase all the grants that we, um, that we fund? We started Grant Showcase a couple of years ago. Some of you may remember Walk Our Walk or maybe An Educator for a Day. Those were some programs that Ann had done before I started, uh, that we kinda did for a while and then we decided, you know, we really wanna get in and get, get down and see what these grants are doing in our classrooms. So a couple of years ago, we came up with the idea of Grant Showcase. So we, it's very similar to Grant Patrol, except we don't go to every school. We pick a couple of schools to visit, we get on some buses and we go and we get to see the grants in action. And I will tell you, that's also very meaningful because to see these kids get excited about what they're learning and what they're doing and, and how this money has made a difference in their classrooms, to get the, to see the teachers light up and realize that, um, they're able to do some really unique and, uh, things they wouldn't be able to do otherwise without this grant money. So it's really been successful. I did wanna talk about where the money comes from. And that's why I had to put in this little slide about No Golf Golf Tournament. This is kind of a throwback. Um, a couple of years ago, um, it was one of the first fundraisers that was started through the foundation. And, um, it was very successful over the, over seven years, it raised over $200,000. And so it was a great start. Um, it was, as you can see, there's some familiar faces up there on the pictures of some of our staff that attended. Um, and so just wanted to share with you, that was one of the things that they did start off with, raising funds, um, that's how they raised some funds. Of course, 50 Men Who Can Cook, um, snuck in right behind that, um, at, in 2008 and it has been hugely successful. Um, this has been our, basically our signature fundraiser for the last, uh, 12 years. I don't, I can't believe I've actually survived 12 of them or that many of them. Uh, it is a lot of work, but it is a lot of fun. And our celebrity chefs love coming and participating. We're almost full for this year and, uh, we're very excited to host it again as well. And every year, it's, it's, we always do something new and better. And as you can see, it's been, um, 397 celebrity chefs have participated and we have raised $1.6 million just through this particular fundraiser. Another way that we've raised funds is our employee giving campaign. This is an opportunity for our own teachers and staff to give to the Education Foundation through their paycheck. And it's a really simple process. We approach, we talk to them about what the foundation does, they sign up and they can give one, five, $20 per paycheck, um, to us and it comes right out of their paycheck and then we, we get a check from the district for that. We started this program, um, nine years ago, which is really hard to believe. And at that very first year, um, our, our, our theme was, "Will you help us make an impact?" And funny enough, this, this, the girl that's on this, um, this brochure is a friend of mine's daughter and she's a senior this year at College Station High School. So you can see, um, how old this picture is. But what I'm really excited about is when we first started this program, we didn't know what would happen. We didn't know where we would go with this. Uh, first year, 21% of our employees gave 15, almost $16,000. This past year, uh, we just finished up our campaign, uh, for this school year. Of course, we had our 20th birthday as our theme and we were able to hit 50% of our employees giving and they have pledged $127,000 to our foundation, which I will tell you personally is very humbling because to me, that is who we serve. We are here to serve our teachers and our students and if they're the ones that are, you know, they, they believe in what we're doing and so they're willing to put, put their money in the pot as well. So it really is, um, I get kind of emotional, to be honest with you, because it's emotional that that many people are, are willing to support us. Um, and we've almost raised a half a million dollars just through this program. In fact, we'll hit that next year. So two years ago, um, we really decided that we needed to do something a little different than just depend on 50 Men Who Could Cook as our main fundraiser. And so in talking with other foundations across the state, um, I knew an annual campaign was, was the way to go and we decided to call it our Partnering Program. So we, we, um, put this together two years ago, in, in 2017, we rolled it out. And really, it's kind of a one-stop shop because what, what was happening is I was going to our donors and saying, "Hey, will you sponsor 50 Men? Will you sponsor Hall of Fame? Will you do this?" And this, what this does is it kind of rolls it all into one program and gives them opportunities to have sponsorships and recognition, all of our programs, all of our events, Chrissy's Closet, all the things kind of roll into one nice, uh, donation. And they loved it. And I loved it because it was a nice, easy way to, to put, pull everything together and to even raise more money because what happened was, you'd be, you would start talking to people about sponsoring 50 Men, but they didn't understand what the money went for. And with this program, we really sat down with people and had an opportunity to really share and show them the impact that we're making with our programs and our activities. So this program is, we're only in the second year of it and we are just, you know, still working on our, getting our donations in this year. Um, but really, we're, we're gonna hit probably half a million dollars in the, in the, in these two years of, with this program because it's just been that successful and it's, we've been able to have, um, more opportunity to talk to more businesses. And I think they like that and it shows that we have, um, validity, it shows that we, we're doing what we're saying, saying we're doing. And, um, it doesn't hurt that CHI St. Joe came in at $20,000 for our 20th birthday this year either, so that was a nice bonus, so. So you might ask yourselves, where does, I wanted to show y'all kind of a little pie here of where the money does come from. And I'm really excited that our partnering programs, um, really 35% of the money that we do raise now comes from our partnering program, which is really important because that's our annual campaign and that's where the money really should be, the bulk of it should be coming from. Of course, we still do really well with 50 Men Who Can Cook, 30% is coming from that. Employee giving is a huge chunk now at 15%. And of course, we still have money coming in for scholarships. We have several people that still endow scholarships and, and that's always a good amount. And then we have minor money coming in from our other smaller programs. We also do pretty well on our investments because we have a board restricted amount, which I'll share with you in a second. So 4% of our money actually comes from our investments. But where the, where does the money go once it comes in? And this is kind of a nice little chart that shows you. Most of it does go out to teacher grants, um, scholarships are, are large amounts. We also have a board restricted fund that, that we have set aside, kind of a rainy day fund, if you will, that we hope to help pay for some of the, um, overhead costs, to get our overhead costs down a little bit. And, uh, some of the, some of the money does go back to our campus rebate. One thing I didn't mention to you, in our employee giving program, if you're a teacher at a campus, whatever you donate to us, the following year, half of that money goes back to your campus in unrestricted funding so that that campus can use it in any way they would like to do that. So it gives, gives us a way to kind of give money back to those, each campus, uh, that they can use it for their, what their greatest needs are. And then this is just kind of a financials at a glance. Um, so starting with 1999, if you look at the funds raised the first year, $175,000, which, to be honest with you, was a pretty lofty amount considering it was the first year. That was amazing. Good job, Ann Ganter. She did a good job. Um, but as you can see, um, we, this, I'm going off of, of what we had last year because those are my official numbers and I have a full year to show you. So last year, we actually raised $545,000, which is almost half a million dollars. Um, program funding the first year of the foundation, most, $33,000 and that pretty much all went to grants and, uh, I don't even think we were doing scholarships at that point. This past year, we, we put back into the school district $246,000 in the form of the different, different projects that we have going, programs. Endowed scholarships, um, the very first year, Myra and Art Bright started our first endowed scholarship at $10,000. That's what it took to endow one back then. Now it takes $25,000. Uh, but currently, we have 13 endowed scholarships. Um, each of those have at least $25,000 in their account and, uh, the culmination of all 13 of those is $424,000. We, like I mentioned before, we, we have a board restricted account. Obviously, it was zero back at the very beginning, but now we have $800,000 and we hope to get that almost to a million dollars within the next year or two. Um, and like I said, most of that money is, we're hoping that the money that's, um, the interest that is created off of that account will go to help pay some overhead expenses and keep our overhead down. We'll just be using our interest money to pay for that. And it's also nice to have that for a rainy day in case something happens with our donors or the economy, you just never know. It's good to have that in the bank. And then of course, our total assets, you can see, um, beginning of the first year, we had $126,000, now we have 1.4 million, um, which, that means we're in good shape. We're in good shape. So with that, um, I really wanna say thank you to our community. Thank you for those of you who have donated and served and supported us. Um, it is very humbling to be in this position and see the overwhelming support from our community because they continue to give, they continue to support us no matter what we do, how, how things happen. And we know we've been through some, some challenging times the last couple of years with our zoning, with our growth. Um, it's a, it's a great time to be in College Station ISD and sometimes it's a challenging time to be in CSISD. But with the great growth that we have, I know we'll overcome whatever things that we struggle with and you guys have been great leaders and supporters of us. And so, uh, with that, I just wanna thank you and, um, answer any questions or entertain any comments.
Wow, awesome. This is truly a wonderful thing. Thank you for that. Uh, and, and I do echo what you said. This, this reminds us why we're here. Uh, it's, it's about these students and, and these teachers and, and the good work they do to get these students ready to be successful citizens. Anyone else wanna have comments?
You know, I love Education Foundation. I'm always impressed by everything that you're able to do. I mean, I didn't even know, I knew about most of it, but there are some of the programs that I didn't know about and I'm just amazed at the width and the depth of all of your programs. So, good job. Anyone that hasn't been to Grant Patrol, I highly recommend it. It's a lot of fun. Awesome.
I'll throw in one thing and it was, when it really hit me, the impact of these programs, is when I was with my son at, uh, in Oakwood Science Class and they were using one of the things the Education Foundation had funded and they were having these CO2-powered car races.
Oh, yeah.
And it was really an awesome thing to watch all of those kids and the excitement they had about science. Uh, and they were understanding what was going on and having that real-world application. And it wouldn't have happened without the Education Foundation and that grant, so. Really awesome, thank you. So really awesome, thank you. Anyone else? Okay.
Thank you.
Item J1, consider approval and purchase of laptop computers for Oakwood Intermediate School from Avanex in the amount of $131,222 per National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance contract using Title I federal funds. Dr. Ely.
Thank you, Mr. Harris, members of the board. We do have this, uh, one purchase for, uh, laptops for Oakwood Intermediate School using Title I federal funds. With more information on this purchase is Mike Martindale, Deputy Superintendent and Chief Financial Officer. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely, uh, Mr. Harris and board members. Uh, item J1 is for the purchase of laptop computers for student use. These laptops will support a literacy initiative implemented this year there at Oakwood. Uh, the initiative is, uh, in place to, uh, improve student performance and close performance gaps between student groups. Uh, these, uh, the attached quote secured from Avanex for the Hewlett Packard laptops are available to us through the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Uh, all, uh, items in this purchasing cooperative have been competitively bid and meet the competitive bid requirements. Uh, pending questions, it would be administration's recommendation that the board approve the purchase, purchase of these laptop computers for Oakwood Intermediate from Avanex in the amount of $131,220 per the NCPEA contract 0165 and we would utilize Title I funds for this purchase.
I'm going to abstain from discussion and voting on this matter.
I would move, uh, that we approve the purchase as presented.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion carries six, zero with one abstention. Takes us to item K1, consideration, discussion and possible action related to elementary boundary adjustment. Do you want public speakers first or do you?
We're gonna introduce the item real quick and then have public speakers.
Okay, go ahead. Dr. Ely.
Uh, yes, so, uh, item K1 is a consideration, discussion and possible action related to elementary boundary adjustment. The elementary boundary adjustment has become necessary because of the opening of Riverbend Elementary School, which will open in August of 2019. Uh, with a little bit more, uh, background information regarding, uh, the, this, uh, agenda item and how we got here this evening is Mike Martindale, Deputy Superintendent. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Dr. Ely. Uh, as, uh, board members, as Dr. Ely mentioned, the, uh, reason for the, uh, need to adjust our elementary, uh, boundaries is due to the opening of the district's 10th Elementary School, Riverbend. You kind of saw some information on that earlier this evening in workshop, uh, from Mr. Hall and how we're progressing with that facility. It will be, uh, completed in February of 2019 and so it'll be ready for use for kiddos, uh, next August 2019. As you're all aware, we met, began meeting to, uh, discuss possible boundary considerations Monday, October the 1st. We had a workshop at that time. Administration, uh, presented board with their initial recommendation for the boundaries to accommodate the opening of Riverbend. Uh, we had, uh, public, uh, forums available on Wednesday, October 3rd and Thursday, October the 4th to receive, uh, public feedback on those initial proposed zones. Uh, we met again on Monday, October the 8th. Um, and, uh, administration provided a revised recommendation based on some of the feedback we received on the 3rd and 4th. And of course, the public also could provide feedback via email at feedback@csisd.org. Uh, the, uh, map you see before you is the one we shared and, uh, made our recommendation at the October 8th meeting. So this evening, we are here, uh, recommending board approve proposed zones as presented. Also with that, I will, uh, review grandfathering recommendation as well that we shared at the 8th. But our recommendation with that also is that students entering the 4th grade in the 1920, uh, school year whose attended zones change may elect a grandfather and stay at their currently zoned school. Those for 4th graders, current year of 3rd graders. If they are impacted next year, they may grandfather 4th graders to stay at their current building. Uh, so we have this recommendation before you, uh, for consideration. I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Okay, so at this time, we'll have public speakers. Are there any more cards? Okay, again, if you, if you would like to speak on this item, please grab a white card and fill it out and turn it in to Ms. Horn. Uh, okay, so our speaker, uh, will be John Anders. And as you're headed that way, I'll just briefly summarize. Uh, you'll have three minutes, uh, and you'll have one opportunity, uh, opportunity at the microphone. Unused minutes may not be accrued by any other speaker. Uh, and the executive assistant will time the comments and alert us when time has expired and the board does not allow derogatory comments. So, uh, if, you'll come to the podium and start with your name and address.
My name is John Anders. I live at, uh, 4211 Colchester Court, which is the area, um, it looks like we turned off the, uh, presentation, but it was one of the starred areas which, let's see here, is this it? No, no. It was one of these starred areas which is currently zoned to Forest Ridge and is slated to be rezoned to Spring Creek. So it's part of Castle Gate 1, which is just west, a little bit northwest of Victoria, where Victoria hits 6. So that's where I live and, uh, I wanted to just give voice again to the argument that that particular section of Castle Gate 1, uh, remain, uh, zoned to Forest Ridge as opposed to Spring Creek. Um, there's, I know there was an earlier petition that you guys saw about this particular rezoning issue and, uh, this is a new petition which was circulated over the weekend around fall festival time. So I'm going to give you a paper copy of that petition, um, in case you didn't, um, that didn't come to your attention, um, over the weekend. The petition just contains a few arguments that folks on that side of Victoria feel are important to consider in the rezoning. Um, we think that the number of children that are going to be displaced away from Forest Ridge is small and not likely to make a material impact on the overall enrollment volume of Forest Ridge, especially given the numbers, uh, of enrolled that we see in your own estimates. And we think that the impact on the kids is big. So there's going to be a big impact on a few kids, but not a big impact on the enrollment of Forest Ridge. Um, I understand you have to make some cut somewhere on the map and if you are unable to re, or to keep those particular, uh, areas of Castle Gate 1 zoned to Forest Ridge, uh, we urge you to consider extending the grandfathering to be more generous than it currently is. Um, I think one proposal that people in our community have talked about is extending it to include all currently enrolled, uh, students at Forest Ridge who live in that particular part of Castle Gate 1, which would come to a small number of students. We're estimating less than 20, um, but would make a, a big impact on those particular students and the community that they live in. I don't know if I, I hope I didn't go over my three minutes, but I think that's, that's kind of all I wanted to say. So thank you guys for your attention.
Thank you. Any other cards? Dr. Ely, do you have any more comments or do you want us to take it from here?
Uh, no, sir. I think we've, uh, made the recommendation that, uh, Mr. Martindale summarized and, uh, would love to answer any questions or hear any comments that you may have for us.
Well, I, I'll start. Uh, I know we've spent a lot of time on this together, but, but also individually, some of us running, uh, others of us walking at a more leisurely pace, um, in the, the areas that are potentially impacted by change, um, and have given it a lot of consideration and, and thought. And I'm, I know we talked, it was last Monday, uh, extensively about the revisions and, uh, a lot of those revisions in particular, uh, addressed some of the concerns I had, the Edelweiss area. And to me, the one that really impacted me was the east side of Victoria in the connection with the hiking and biking trail that, uh, goes through that little green way there. And we talked about that and I don't feel the need to rehash all of that for you. Anyone else have thoughts, questions, comments?
Um, I think it's important to say that we did read what we received, um, or I did. I'm assuming everyone else did too, that we received over the weekend. Um, and we do take those comments very seriously. Um, I think it's important to reiterate a couple of things myself. One is we have nearly $27 million building that we need to fill with students and I know some people, um, have some angst about moving, um, to the new school. But I assure you that we have, um, some great leadership over there and, um, feel certain that they will have a culture of their own and it will be a good one. Um, I think, again, I would like to say that I, um, am so, um, impressed by the fact that everybody wants to stay at their school and, and that really speaks volumes to what, um, the staffs, uh, the staff and, and the administrators are doing at each of their schools. I also want to say that I think that each one of those principals, principals in, uh, those schools would tell you that they are the best school and the, and, uh, and mean it. But I will also tell you that if you go to a different school, the principal will tell you that it's the best school that's in the district. So, um, I think that speaks volumes to the pride that these, um, schools have and that, um, I really do believe that you will not be disappointed at whatever school that you go to. It may be a change, it may be a little different, but I think you'll be, um, happy. And it's, um, in response to what we talked about, walking Castle Gate, I, I really do think that one of the things that struck me about, uh, walking over there is that, um, strip of Victoria and trying to keep, um, kids on one side or the other. And I still do believe that, um, Spring Creek is part of that neighborhood, um, Castle Gate 1 and 2. I think that they, that Castle Gate's fortunate to have two neighborhood schools in their neighborhood. So, um, I feel, I feel certain that whichever of those two schools that these kids go to, they're going to have a great experience.
Okay, I do feel compelled to say something. Um, so this boundary adjustment stuff, it doesn't get easier. You know, I, I hope that people understand how difficult this is for us and I'm going to try not to get emotional. But every time I read one of these emails, I can feel the parents pleading for their kids. I really can. And I read them and I, I say, okay, what, can we, can we make this? Can we, can we make this wish happen? And I get in my car and I drive around and I try to rack my brain, trying to figure out some way that we can make, meet everybody's, you know, desires. And then I come back to it and I'm like, ah, but we can't. And then I, I'm going to sound like a broken record, then I start thinking about, well, what are they really asking for? And you're right, everyone, I think all of us have said it, every parent has said, we just want to stay at our school. We love our school. And, um, I am going to tell a little personal story. I try not to tell personal stories, but here I go. Um, I've been there. I was there last year and I'm going to try not to cry. So I do feel these parents because, you know, we were at, my oldest went to Oakwood and she loved it. I loved it. I loved Oakwood. And then, you know, my middle was rezoned to Cypress Grove, my sweet little 4th grader. And, um, you know, I was like, I was thinking, wait, but we love Oakwood. We want to stay at Oakwood. And, you know, some of the emails that we got, the parents said, I don't care if the school's further. I don't care if my current school is further than my new school. I want to go to the further school. And I was that person. We're like half a mile from CSMS and less than two, less than two miles to Cypress Grove and Oakwood and AMCMS are four miles away. And I was like, you know what? I, I want to stay at Oakwood and AMCMS because we love these schools. And I want my second kiddo to have a chance to have the same, possibly be on the same team, have the same teachers, have some of these great experiences. But I supported the, the rezoning. We went to Cypress Grove and it was tough. My middle kiddo is one of those kids that, um, she only needs a couple of friends, right? And it just happened to be that all of her friends were rezoned for Oakwood and she felt like she was alone at Cypress Grove. So it was tough. It was really hard. But I won't go through details, but fast forward to one year later, right now, and I did get her permission to talk about her. Um, she loves Cypress Grove. We've made Cypress Grove our school. I miss Oakwood. I miss the teachers at Oakwood and not getting to see them all the time and the administration at Oakwood. But we also, I mean, we've fallen in love with Cypress Grove and everybody there. And I'm telling this story, I'm saying this just to, um, kind of show that I've gotten to see that we do have incredible schools all across the district. You know, I didn't think it would be, I didn't think that we would fall in love with Cypress Grove the way that we did, um, but we did. So I am very, very hopeful that the same thing happens for all of these kiddos and these families. And I know it's scary and it's hard. It's scary for the parents. It's scary for the kids. I get that. It was scary for us. But I am hopeful for everyone and I do think and I, I trust that all of our campuses, you know, challenge our kids academically, they support them emotionally and they nurture our kids, all of the campuses. So, um, I know that was a long-winded personal story, but I come back to that, as much as I try to figure out how we can make all this work for everybody and give everybody exactly what they wanted, at the end of the day, we do have to fulfill a brand new school and we do have to take care of the overcrowding at the other schools. So unfortunately, we do have to move kids. But again, I'm going to say it again, I'm hopeful that they will embrace their new school and love it and, you know, give it a chance. So that's all I have to say. And I didn't cry.
I think one of the questions, I just want to make sure that, um, it's a theme that I usually focus on is transportation. Dr. Ely, do you see any, um, issues with busing or transportation with the new zones?
Uh, I think, obviously transportation will be an impact because we're opening up a 10th elementary and so we'll have more routes and we'll have more buses. Uh, that will be needed, uh, as a result of, of having, you know, additional school. Um, I, I think what's, what the administration's recommendation, what you'll find with that is, uh, for the most part, we tried to move neighborhoods closer to schools. Um, some, some still neighborhoods that moved were already on a bus and are just going to a different location, uh, for their school. Um, but when you, when you look at, especially what we were able to do down south, I tried to, keeping most, uh, most larger areas at a closer school, I think will cut down, uh, not only CSISD bus transportation time, but parent transportation time as well.
I mean, I, I thought we had a very full discussion, uh, at our last session and I know we've all beat our head against the wall with this and we've read all the things. And I, I think the response by the administration in this last round was, uh, a lot of changes based on public feedback that we got for safety concerns, practical concerns, transportation concerns, and, uh, that we adjusted a lot of stuff. Certainly in, in my history, we adjusted more things than I think we ever have before based on community feedback. And, uh, that doesn't mean that we addressed every single person who talked to us, uh, about. And that doesn't mean that we addressed every single person who talked to us about things, but I think this set of recommendations is a, is a really good job at doing our best to be as practical as we can. So I would move that we approve the proposed elementary boundaries and grandfathering recommendation as presented to accommodate the opening of the district's 10th and soon-to-be very proud elementary school, Riverbend, effective in August 2019.
I will second that motion. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 7-0.
Yes, sir.